Hello, everyone. Welcome to this regular school committee meeting of Thursday, November 15th, 2018. I'm told that today we do not have technical difficulties. We're on live and our millions of viewers can see us everywhere in Arlington. Is there any -- I'm not seeing any public participation.
No.
Okay, so moving on, we are going to meet our new administrator, Mr. Brian Maringer, who is the Odison Middle School Principal. Great.
Well, at this point, it doesn't feel like Brian Maringer is a new administrator. He's been here since July 1 and we are very -- could not be happier working with him. Brian comes from Dover Sherburne before that and he -- I think that really what you want to know now is really now that he's been here a number of months is to talk a little bit about what it's like being here and a little bit about what's going on at Odison these days. So you'll be back with us again in December when we start talking about money.
Right.
Yeah. But anyway, we're just delighted that Brian has joined us as a colleague and as I said, at this point, it doesn't feel like he's been -- he's new. He's been here quite a while, looking through lots of issues.
Yeah, thank you. It feels odd to not be standing and I usually don't use a microphone. My voice tends to carry, so it seems a little bit of a kind of a different arena. But I first of all, wanted to thank Dr. Bodie, Dr. McNeil, and Rob Spiegel for the opportunity. So I've been here for four and a half months and have really enjoyed my time in Arlington. You know, I left the district that I really loved and had a lot of friends, really liked the kids, and I have found myself in a very fortunate situation in which I have landed in a great spot. So Arlington has been so far wonderful. The first and foremost, I really have enjoyed working with the kids. They're an impressive group. They come to school every day, ready to learn. They're working real hard. We have 860 students right now. You know, that is a little bit of a different setup than last year where they had 1,250. I think the extra space in the hallways, I think the extra classroom space has really lent itself to hopefully a good opening by students and staff have hopefully felt that. I wanted to thank the faculty. I'm getting a chance now to get into classrooms and seeing teachers teach and working with our students. And I enjoy going in and seeing the group work, the work with computers, getting into the artwork, seeing some of the creativity. So I've really liked working with the faculty and staff and I think we're getting to a point where we're having honest conversations of where we want to go as a new school. I think the Gibbs leaving was beneficial in many ways, but it was also a little bit of an upheaval in the fact that you had one-third of your faculty leaving, you had most of your teachers changing classroom, there was a transition that happened this summer. And I think as I get to know the teachers and kind of their vision of what the school wants to become, it's been an exciting time. So anytime you're able to create hopefully a culture and talk about how you can educate kids, I think it's really a wonderful time for an administrator. The parents also have been great. I've received numerous emails and notes saying how they could be supportive. They've, you know, also given me certain ideas on certain subjects that they think could be a little bit better and I appreciate the dialogue. I tell any of the parents or guardians. I always like a phone call. I sometimes get buried in the email, so please feel free to reach out and drop me a line and know how things are going. On a more personal level, I'd like to thank Maureen Murphy, who's the one assistant principal, who is still the same. There's three administrators and she's the only holdout and she's done a wonderful job of making sure we have the institutional knowledge. There's also a new administrator, Rochelle Rabino, who has hit the ground running. She brings a lot of energy and enthusiasm and the front office staff has been great. They keep me laughing and balanced every day. So Marie, Pam, and Cheryl have been keeping me nice and balanced. So what we're hoping is that we can really educate every child at the middle school level. We're trying to improve. I don't believe that schools should stay static. You're always looking at how to do things better and how that can be improved. I'm getting a lot of feedback from the faculty and staff. They have been the one constant through change in Odison. And I appreciate their voice and their willingness to try new things. You know, this year, one of the things we've tried is had a block of time, 10 minutes, called Aspire. And it's really given kids, I think, a chance to catch their breath during a very busy school day. So we have two classes in which the kids go off and are working hard and then they have a 10-minute break in which they're able to grab a snack and have a little downtime. They're able to then go to three classes, have lunch, and then finish up with a couple of classes. So I think the rhythm of the day, from what I hear from faculty members, is a little bit more manageable. We're hoping that kids, which I think in today's age can be very stressed, have been able to feel like they have had a little bit more of a balanced life. And so as we go forward, we're going to keep that in mind of how to educate all our students. I know we just had a professional day on the sixth in which we talked about cultural competency and how we need to reach every kid. There's a spark in something they want to learn and we need to listen and have a little bit more student voice. So I'm hoping that students and parents have felt like there's been a change at the Odison and that we're doing well. I know some of the school committee members have students who are at the Odison. I hope they're thinking that it's been a smooth opening. As I said, I think we can always improve, but we're, you know, we're open to suggestions and part of the excitement of being a school is how do you improve? How do you get better? And, you know, I think that's what I look forward to doing as I'm listening right now to feedback and how we can be better and, you know, hopefully every year, we can get a little bit better. So I didn't know if there's any questions. I can be a little long-winded at times, so I didn't know if anyone had any specific questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Curden?
Thank you. Thanks. So I do have a daughter at Odison.
Yeah.
And she's thrilled with the new space. I would encourage you though to reach out to the kids as well as you are, you know, continuing your introduction to the school. You know, there were some concerns that they had that were not necessarily met with the changes. So one big issue, longstanding issue is at Gibbs, they're allowed to carry backpacks or book bags around and they aren't at Odison. They are at the high school. Why is it for those two years? It was because it was too crowded, now it's not so crowded. Or that, or they could have more locker breaks, so they don't have to carry so much around. So that's one thing to look into. The change with lunches, this is just feedback she's giving me, the change with lunches, you know, they used to all be in lunch together. And so for this year, it's a transition year and they're missing that. Gibbs is different. They don't all have lunch together, obviously, as a grade. So just as a social thing, they don't get to see the same friends they used to see. So, and anyways, I would just urge you to reach out to hear what the kids are saying and what other things can be improved because a continuous improvement is important. You have more room and more. I know you also have another new assistant principal, so there's a lot of change. But I would definitely encourage you, as you get your, you know, your footing, to take another look at some of the things. There's also the whole overall schedule, you know, the four-day schedule, is that really what we want? They have a six-day schedule at Gibbs, it could fit more in, you know, everything should be on the table, really.
No, I agree. I mean, we're there first and foremost for the kids.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think they have great insights. So in my last school that we were in, we had all sorts of surveys and I think a lot of times, I would look at the answers to what the kids thought and I'd be like, they're pretty insightful. Other times, I was surprised by their answers because I'm looking through a lens of a, you know, a 50-year-old, you know, dad and I have a little different perspective on what the kids need. I understand when you have 1,250 students, you have to run it differently than when you have 850 students. I can understand why backpacks weren't allowed. That's something I think we're going to have to look at. This year, we were allowing kids to carry water bottles, which necess -- you know, we're trying to, you know, I don't know if it's the Tom Brady hydration factor or so, but we're trying to be a little bit more kid-focused, I think, because we can, because we do have more space. As we do, you know, as I do get my footing and part about being a new administration, new administrator, is it's a lot of fun to see how things work. It's also sometimes frustrating because you don't know where the copy is, but so you kind of go back and forth. It is something that we do want to solicit, the opinions of the kids, because after all, we're there for them. You know, I know they're disappointed about the lunch structure. The problem is, we only have so many seats in the cafeteria and each year, the class size goes up. So where we have 457 graders, we had smaller classes before and we just don't have the seating capacity to put all those kids at lunch at the same time, which is why we have to divide it up by three. But I have, you know, kids have said like, oh, I used to eat with so-and-so and so-and-so. That was great! And I'm like, ah, I don't have 450 seats here, you got to kind of divide it up. So some things are practical, other things we need to look at as hopefully we're developing, you know, a new school and a new culture.
Great.
I have a son, I never get this level of detail.
Yeah, girls are different. Girls are different.
Oh, so my kids are actually out of Odison.
Yeah.
But I actually just want to second the sort of focus on the backpacks.
Yeah.
It was a source of huge frustration. Son had organizational problems and I felt like it was setting him up for failure to not have backpack and not, and so he'd lose things. And my daughter, you know, this is a really difficult time for kids who, for girls, who might need to carry certain things.
Yeah.
And don't have a place to hide it.
No, I have --
That could be really helpful.
Yeah, I have three daughters, so I know exactly what you're talking about.
And, yeah, so it's just, it's just, it's one of the most frustrating things for kids and it feels unnecessary.
Yeah.
And it's something, you know, and it's one of those things that I need to look at, the perspective. I understand, like, in the hallways, when I came to visit last spring and you were, you know, it was like, you know, 12-lane highway going in and out and you were kind of pinned as kids were passing and I understand there is more space. You know, I think one of the reasons they did have Aspire is that you don't go really more than two periods without getting a locker break. And I think one of the things they also tried to do more this year is put the lockers right next to the cluster teachers that they have. So I know there is some thought of why they re, you know, when they went and redesigned the layout of the school, they did. You know, I need to look at the feedback. I think most of the kids would like to. I need to look at the feedback from the, you know, from the teachers and find out what their perspective and then make a decision. But I do see why they didn't do it before and I think it's something we'll bring up and talk with the leadership team as we move forward.
Ms. Morgan?
I have a daughter at the Gibbs in sixth grade and thinking about, like, this is like a lot of transitions for you, right? You're coming in as the school is undergoing this huge transition and then next year, you're going to get this first crop of kids that have been way off in East Arlington for a year doing who knows what. Great things, I think.
Yeah.
But I think that's like, that's sort of the next, one of the next sort of like springtime things is like how to start thinking about how those kids are going to move over and what that's going to look like. Because they're going to be different from the seventh graders that you inherited this year because they've had a very different sixth-grade experience.
Yeah.
And I think that'll be, I'm excited to learn more about what that looks like. I think not forgetting that, like, this year, the seventh-grade parents that you came into were already sort of familiar with Odison, whereas those of us who are coming, especially if it's our first one, we've been at the Gibbs for a year, we have never been there. So it's as new to us. Even though middle school isn't new, Odison is new. So I think that will be thinking about how that transition happens for kids who just transitioned a year ago. I'm sure you already are thinking about it.
Right.
But that's, I think that's another opportunity.
Yeah, I mean, I was, when I accepted this position, I knew I was very fortunate in a couple of things. I knew that I'd have 400 less kids, which obviously, less kids, less scheduling, you know, it's, it is a benefit. I do know that one of the other things that I had, which was going from me, was that most all the kids weren't going to be new.
Right.
So I wasn't, you know, other than kids who were moving in the district, they already kind of knew where to go, what the system was, how to move. So even though I was going to be new and one of the assistants, I knew that I could rely on the faculty and rely on the students because they kind of knew how the Odison ran. And so I understand now that I do have another crop of kids that they're not going to be familiar with and we are going to have to figure out how to transition them. I think for a lot of kids, they like change, but there's a lot of kids who the transition from one school in fifth grade to one school in sixth grade, to seventh and eighth and to high school, is a lot of transitions. And so we're going to be hopefully thoughtful and real mindful of what kids need so that they feel comfortable. I remember coming in during the summer, there was a transition program of getting ready to go to middle school, except for it was at the Odison and it was mostly Gibbs kids. And I was thinking, you know, this would be great for next year when the kids are at Odison during the summer and they get a feel hopefully of what it's, what it's all about. And hopefully, we're seen as a school that are welcoming to kids and that we're kid-first and we want to make sure that we have, going back to the original question of really have student voice. And so that's what we're hoping to have and, you know, we have some ideas and Kristin and I have to get together and figure out how that is successful for kids.
Thank you.
Great. Any more questions? Nope? Okay.
Excellent. Thanks for the opportunity. Thank you.
Just a, hi, I'm Julie Keys. I'm the AEA rep and a teacher at the Odison. I just want to say it's been a great year. I think the best thing about Brian is he's incredibly visible in the school. He's around all the time. He greets kids by name. He's supervising A and PM stuff and he's been wonderful about just, you know, if there's a problem, if something comes up, he comes down and talks to us. You know, it's not an email. It's not a come see me in my office when you get a second. Like, he's down in the hallway, checking things out, talking, you know, having a conversation about it. It's been really effective.
Great, thank you.
And to your question, the planning on transitions began even before he entered the front door this year. They have a very strong working relationship and developing, the two principals are working together with the curriculum leaders, because there are some changes. There's differences in the schedule and there's differences in programming and how we're going to make those transitions. You know, one of the things we found that was very successful last year for the entering sixth-grade students is that Ms. DeFrancisco went to the fifth grade. And so those are the kinds of transitions that we will probably continue to have. More than likely, Mr. Maringer will go to Gibbs this year so they get to know him a little bit as, you know, as we're doing this. Because you want to make those transitions as smooth as possible for our students.
Great.
But anyway, we, as I said, we could not be more delighted than working together this year and for many years, I hope.
Thank you very much. So I neglected at the start to introduce our AEA rep, who just introduced herself, Juliana Keys. Thank you for being here. And we also have a student rep who is Victor Chilario.
Chilario.
Yes, and he's a student. He's on the freshman student council and he's also in the, in the science club or computer science. Great. So welcome, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we are moving on to the buffer zone report with Ms. Alves.
Yes.
Good evening. You just have to turn that on. Yeah.
Turn this on.
I'll just preface this while she's getting this set up. We took your suggestions from last, the last time we presented the buffer zone report to make some changes. You have it, I think it's going to be hard frankly to see a lot of this because they're charts and I apologize to people who are watching this evening, they'll have a hard time. But we will have the report on our website so that they can look at the numbers. But you're going to, Merrill, Alves is going to talk to the, to the issue. And so I think, I think people listening will, even without the charts, will understand what the, our experience was last year.
Well, last year, when I gave the buffer zone report, I didn't even really know what a buffer zone was. You know, I had come in and someone else had handled all the kindergarten registration and all the decisions and I started in October and reported on his data. And I was asked some questions that I had no idea what to, how to answer them. So, will this change? Do you have to turn it on on the side? Okay. So the first thing that we did was, it's on, it just isn't doing it. The first thing we did was we added a few data fields to the registration database.
Yeah, that's right.
And we added a field that showed that if we were moving someone from their primary choice to a school that they didn't want to go to, you know, they had two choices, we indicated that in the data that they have been moved to their second choice. Another thing that we did was we left things in flux until we had a chance to look at the data. We produced a buffer zone report for each student that had the student's name, an address, what school they wanted to go to, the parent's reason why. And each of those reports went up to the superintendent so the superintendent could make an informed decision with everything that she needed to know right in front of her in that one piece of paper. And tandem to that, we were spending a lot of time looking at the class size report. You know, if we put 100 kids into this school, how big are the classes going to be? So anyway, at first, again, this is, this is hard to see. The first thing that we did is we just put everybody into their choice, their first choice, and then we said, okay, no, we can't have classes that big. So we moved kids around from their school that they requested to the other school. And the end of April, the beginning of May, we had close to, I'd say, 50% of the parents all in their second choice. And at that point, we started talking about, can we do anything with the classrooms? Can we put some more classrooms in? So what they did was they added three and a half classrooms. I say a half because Dallin added one that was half kindergarten, half first grade. And then we were able to put people back to the school of their choice. So what we did was we reached out to all those parents that were, and there were about 45 of them, that were in their second choice and said, do you want to go back to your first choice? We have a seat for you there if you want it. And if they said yes, we moved them and we took off the second choice. And if they said no, we said, okay, you happy where you are? And we took off the second choice. So if they didn't want to move, then they were satisfied with the placement. And with that, we were able to balance the classes across the schools and have almost everyone satisfied with their, their placement. Now, I picked September 6th because we had a number of students that their withdrawals went in on the first day of school. So if we looked at September 4th, September 4th was the first day, right? Then the numbers would have been inflated. So this is the balance we have now. And other than the bracket class sizes being a little bit high, the rest of the district is pretty well-balanced. And in that balance, we still had 16 students that were not placed in their preferred So, and that is, you know, multiple grades. So this chart here shows the school, what the buffer zone is, where they got placed. And so there were 16 students that weren't in their, their preferred school. Now, we had overall 154 students that were in the buffer zones together, you know, and 45 of them were students who had an older sibling already in the school. So we had no choice but to put them in the school where their sibling was, because you're not going to split up a family between two schools. So that left us with, you know, moving the students around and getting them as close to the best placement as possible for them and the best school as possible for them. And the final result, which you can't see at all, is the all 154 of them in where they are. But what you can see here is that, you know, for Bishop, we had grades K through 4. For Brackett, we had grades K through 4. For Dallin, we had K and 4. They're not just kindergarteners that are involved in this, you know, these buffer zones. We have to look at, sometimes if there was room in the kindergarten and there were two siblings that were moving into the buffer zone, but there wasn't room in the fourth grade or fifth grade, we'd have to go to the other school because, you know, if there are siblings, you want to keep them together and we need to be able to have class sizes working for all the grades. So the, the final summary was, we delivered 945 students through the registration database. 16 of those students went to the second choice, the 45 sibling placements, and our, our final balance was almost 90% of the parents were satisfied. They got what they wanted. Now, the, if you're sitting there doing the math, we also had a number of people register for, for Gibbs and Odison and the high schools, so they're not counted in the math for whether or not they, I only looked at the people that were involved in the buffer zone. So.
Ms. Morgan?
So I had some questions about, so the kindergarten, I mostly like understand how the decisions were made. It's super helpful to see it play out April, August, September, because that sort of shows you why, you know, there are some kids in April who you say, oh, gosh, what happened to them in August? They all moved from, from Thompson to Bishop, but that was because we opened another class and so it all, like, the story made sense to me. Where I got a little bit lost was looking at, so putting aside those 119 kindergartners, I'm interested in the 35 remaining first through fifth graders, right? And how they were divided up. And I reconciled the placement of all of these buffer zone kids with our class size report and a lot of it made sense. We were sending, we were shifting kids to where we had smaller class sizes, but there were four that were really, I just seemed totally indefensible to me. were four that were really, I, just seemed totally indefensible to me. We added a student to the second grade at Bishop. We've had Bishop parents here all fall complaining about classes. Is there at 24, 25, 26? That kid looks like it was in the Bishop Stratton zone. Stratton second grade is 22, 23, 23. So, like, I, I can't, I, I was like, well, maybe they were a sibling, but then there's not a sibling. And so, that happened in Bishop's fourth grade. It happened, there was a Bishop Stratton buffer. Clearly, it was the parents' choice. It happened in Bishop's third grade. All class, all grades that really didn't need more kids. They could have gone to Stratton. And I, I get that we want to make parents happy, kind of. And then, but I feel like our obligation as a school department is to really push for as reasonable of class sizes as possible. And so, I guess, I don't know if you have any, and I know we can't talk about these specific kids. You gave us enough, you gave us enough data and it's beautifully laid out. You gave us enough to, for, to be dangerous, right? Because you can kind of line them up. But, so I'm, I just, I'm uncomfortable with some of, there's one in Hardy's fourth grade, which is a, a class that we, that we compressed this year. So, why we would add a kid there when they could have gone to Thompson where the classes are smaller? So, I, I don't know.
Well, first of all, Ms. Salvos doesn't make these decisions. I, I make the decisions, all of them. And I can assure you, there were all good reasons. I'd have to pull up the file to know what they are and I, and I would not feel comfortable talking about that at this committee meeting. But if there were ones that you questioned, they're, they were thoughtfully done, considering lots of circumstances in their placement. And the other part of this is that this communication with the building principal on this. So, building principal has part of the, the thinking on it too and is aware of the reason. So, I'll just leave it at that. There are sometimes some very serious reasons why.
More other questions from anyone?
Oh, so I just have a question. This seems to be, will be our new normal where what we think we might do in May may not be what happens in August because classrooms will open up. And I'm just wondering how the communication goes out to the parents? When we make the initial buffer zone assignments, do we then communicate to them sort of clearly that there's some chance that this might shift? Or do we say, this is your assignment, here it is?
No, we always ask them if they would like to be contacted and...
We have a, a flag for waiting list.
Right.
When they get their notification, if they want to be placed on the waiting list for the other school, then they tell us and we put them on the waiting list. And people that don't ask to be on the waiting list might not be in the first group we call if we have a, a seat opened up. So, we'll go through that waiting list and transfer those over. In fact, we only have seven parents that were on the waiting list that didn't get moved, didn't get taken off.
And they get placed on the waiting list by the, the procedures that we have in the policy. And it is done by date. And if it's not, if they register on the same date, then it's a lottery.
So, I was just wondering if there is sort of a clear communication that occasionally we open up a classroom and that...
We did.
Just so we make it sort of clear that these things are in flux, you know?
At the time, in April, when we had to make these decisions, we did not know that we were going to be opening that many classrooms over the summer. So, I think that they left in, in April, they, in April, thought that that's what's going to be their placement. In fact, they went to the open houses at those respective schools. The thing that I did say to parents is that, while, yes, you would see, you know, a particular school, the thing that, that they should know is that the curriculum is the same. So, when they're getting introduced to a kindergarten curriculum at whatever school, it would be the rough, the same introduction somewhere else. So, there are some people that call repeatedly. We, and the person who takes those phone calls is Karen Tesoni in my office. And we keep a log of all the calls, but we still stick to the protocol in terms of how we make the decisions.
No, I'm just, I, so here, here's just, I mean, we've now had two years where we've opened up classrooms, at least two years, right? Where it's been pretty radical, where people weren't getting their first choice and then we opened up a bunch of classrooms and then we shifted a bunch of people, just so in the communication, to make that clear that that has happened in the past, it might happen again, so that it's, so that parents, you're not promising anything, you're not changing your protocol in any way, you're just sort of communicating...
Mm-hmm.
Things that have happened and, and might happen again or might not.
I know.
You know, so that parents don't, I mean, they shouldn't get their hopes up if we're not going to move them, but they also shouldn't be so committed to a school and think that's final, because it, it very often happens that we shift things around.
Well, the interesting thing is the number of people who said they were very happy where they were placed, even though that had been their initial second choice.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Mr. Corden.
Thanks. So, following up on that a little bit. So, the, you know, the problem this year ended up being at Brackett and you did open up the half-class at Dallin, but there were still were some people, just still, at least one person in particular, who was in the Dallin bracket Buffett buffer zone, and their preference was for Dallin, but ended up at Brackett. So, again, without getting into specifics, if we can alert, I don't know if that's somebody, if that was their choice, they changed in line at the end of loving Brackett, or if, if we thought Dallin was going to be full, the half-class was going to be full, I don't know. But if we tell people when they get their assignments that you didn't get your first assignment, there is a waitlist, I know we tell them about the waitlist, but we could also, if we also tell them that we may, in the past, we have had to open up additional classrooms, then they may not get so tied to their other school and would be more willing to shift back if we do have that. Because in this case, it looks like, we did, we did it right. We, we tried not to have so many classes. We, we put everybody over at Brackett, but then we did have to open up a half-class at Dallin and Brackett still ended up having too many kids. So, we weren't able to shift people back over to Dallin. And I don't know if that was because they were resistant or what happened, but that was, if we could correct that in the future by, again, as Jennifer said, making it clear that there may be opportunities and there may be a need to move, not that they'd be required to, but clearly for, for, for better class sizes, people might want to move. That might be helpful.
In the example that you gave, there was, that, that the prospect of the half-classroom was there with better class sizes. One thing that we, I should say, I have not done, is if we placed a, a student in a school and may have been their second choice for class sizes, say, in April and May, and then we contact them again in the summertime and say, you know, it would really be helpful if you would move back to your first choice, but they say, no, I think I want to stay there. I have not forced them, because we put them there and it wouldn't seem fair if that's where they want to stay.
Right.
That doesn't happen, it happened quite a few times, actually, when, when we did this. Now, that would actually be a change to how we've operated going forward, that once they're placed, that then they could be forced to go to another school.
Sorry, sorry, just to clarify, I, I think we're saying is that if the communication is clear that this is a real possibility, they might, they, they might have that both, both ideas in their mind, most places in their mind, and be more open to be, to moving. That's sort of the idea. Right? If they haven't psychologically closed it off, because they think, oh, this is a real possibility, it might be more easier to move them to a place where there are fewer kids.
Well, it was more of, it turned out in reality, more of a possibility this year, but it was not as re, an open possibility the previous year.
Move the year before. There was another year that we did...
Yeah, we haven't done that. And the fact that they're on a waiting list, I think, conveys that, but what you're asking is to, to say that maybe there's even more likelihood.
Right, just spell it out.
I will tell you that for some people, it's, because we get repeated calls. We've gotten calls like seven, eight times over the course and we know the intensity of it. And so, it's also balancing out what is false hope versus the reality. And sometime, we didn't know the reality in April. We didn't even know the reality until much, into the summertime, when things grew. So, I hear what you're saying. I'll try to make that, you know, we can say, this was our experience last year. Probably it won't be our experience this year because we have the classrooms.
Right.
Unless we get class sizes over 600, which is not likely. I don't think that will happen this year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Our estimated number on our own in-district projections for next year is 536. We'll see. Our projections this year, our own internal, based on our own algorithm, it was 571. And that was just shy of, was, we ended at 584, I think we're at now. At one point, we were really pushing 600. But what happens also over the summer, and this is the other piece too, that you can see in the numbers, but telling the story of it, is that, the one thing I think I need to make even clearer to parents, honestly, than that, is that please, when you move, would you please let your school know? I mean, obviously, it would be great to let my office know or the registration office know, but I'd be happy just with the school knowing, because we, what happens is, we get all the way up to September and we just find out they don't show up. That's why there's these changes at the beginning of the year. And so, we're making also decisions on class sizes based on somewhat incorrect information. And we don't even know we have that incorrect information until we get to September and opening of school. So, that's actually would be helpful, because then parents who wanted to perhaps get into a particular class, they would know much earlier based on the numbers. So, it, that would be, what we, we've talked about this before, is trying to get that out there, that message multiple times this spring to people.
The other thing is, once they got a placement, it started building the structures around the school day, like getting into after-school programs and getting transportation and, you know, making arrangements for getting to and from school. And if they've got all those things around school set up, they might not want to try to do it again in another school.
Right. We're going, we're working on the after-school piece because that has been a little bit of an issue. We're moving registration this year back, I think we were thinking maybe late January, early February now. Yeah, we're moving it back a bit so that, that has been a little bit of a crush in terms of people thinking they have to sign up for after-school in two schools. And we're trying to avoid that this year, as best we can. Not be perfect, but...
Other districts do open kindergarten registration in January.
Yeah, we're, we're thinking of moving up. Now, the, the downside of that is that we're going to even have less secure numbers when we do placements, because our registrations continue throughout all the months that will continue. And so, we'll be making decisions on placements probably with less accurate information this year. But that's the choice we're making, is to go earlier.
Ms. Morgan.
Can I just ask one more question about the columns? I, I've always assumed, because I know you used these same, like, the same nomenclature last year, the Bishop Brackett buffer zone versus the Brackett Bishop buffer zone. I assume that the Bishop Brackett buffer is the area that used to be Bishop?
Yes.
And is now in a buffer zone?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, I think it, it could go either way. I don't know why carrying that naming structure since we now have buffer zones. I know that part of the reason, last year you did a, or your office did a really complex analysis of what would have happened if we hadn't had the buffer zones versus if we did, which was, was really helpful and, and very telling. But I'm, I'm wondering if sort of, at some point, if we're going to let go, like, for me, it would be more helpful if I knew, because for me, Bishop Brackett and Brackett Bishop, it's all the same zone, right? They're all the same kids. And so, for me, it would be more helpful.
Well, they're not the same kids.
Well, they're, right, they're not the same kids, but they all live, sure, yes, they all live in the same area, right? So, to figure out how many of those kids, I have to like find this other column and then add them together. I mean, if people like that, being reported out that way as being like, wow, way back when, this used to be Brackett. But for me, like, way back when is like before my time. So, I, I would be willing to let that naming structure go, because I think it's needless. I think it just, it gives us more columns and more, like, more than I need personally.
Well...
I'm willing to be convinced otherwise.
I'll try to convince you otherwise at this point. The, the issue is, is that when we get the census data, it is not, it is just in the old districts. The old, the original districts. And it's very helpful to us just to see it a little differently.
And we can't get them to do that differently?
Well...
No.
No.
Okay.
But the other, sorry. The other reason, though, is to, is to continue, continue to see if we have the right shape in our buffer zones. And so, as we continue, we're postponing that discussion, but as we continue to look at that, it, it helps to know which kids are going to where. Are they still going to their old schools? Or have we, like, in the, in the Bishop bracket, in the Brackett Bishop buffer zone shifted most of those kids now over to Bishop, which was one of the intents of the whole structure? So, that, like, that one, one piece in particular.
Okay.
And there's a couple of other places where it's important to know, like Thompson-Hardy, there, there seems to be a big mishmash of kids going both ways, which is good. So, that, that's something that's clearly working. But it, it's helpful information for now, but you're right.
Someday.
Someday, we can simplify it.
Honestly, last year, I thought it was all a mistake. It was like, why are there two of them?
Okay, so I had one, or kind of a couple of questions that, so in our policy JC, which is what puts buffer zones into place, we talk about needing a report, which this is, but it has questions that are included. And those get to the information that Ms. Morgan was talking about that we heard last year, that I think we may want to hear again about whether class equity is improving. It's not just kindergarten, it's also across the schools. Our imbalance is smaller. So, all of these things are looking at, what we're trying to do is build a case for buffer zones. We're trying to do this because, one, we have people living in them and it is kind of an inconvenience to them and we need to be able to explain clearly why we're doing it and why there's good coming out of it. Two, we may have to expand them, so we're going to have to explain it to more people. And three, we need to see if it's actually helping or if it's just making every, tossing everything up and all comes down and it's really not any different. So, other questions are, the, what buffers are being activated by how much and what's the flow? That, that one is kind of answered by the big chart. But it says, the data will include class size by school grade and class, including appropriate history for comparison. So, these are things I at least would like to see going forward. I don't...
Okay, we can do that. Basically, what you're asking for is no buffer zones, old districts, what would class sizes look across K-5?
Yes.
Yeah, we can do that. In fact, we could probably do that and send you a chart down the road this year.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be helpful, because then when people come to us, we can say, well, yes, it's a problem for some people, but what everyone is gaining from that is this, and we'll have something to show them.
This year, you won't see a lot, because we, those three and a half classrooms made a big difference. Last year, that was not the case as much. So, but we could still do it and then have that be part of something we go forward in the years out. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Morgan.
And just also something nice to, at some point, reach out, like, to the realtors in town, because they're our biggest problem, right? Is that they, they, they are, no, because I hear from, from young families all the time and realtors tell people, oh, you're buying in a buffer zone, this is great, you get to pick where your kid's going to go to school, you just let the superintendent know and you'll be all set. Right? So, I mean, it, it is, like, these are, this is from the horse's mouth, like, this is what our, some, realtors are amazing people, but we can, at some point, once we get good enough, we can distill this down. They're only going to read a page, but we can get something out and... and so, maybe change that narrative from where it's starting.
Yeah. Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, I realize I forgot something. I forgot to mention that Mr. Schlickman and Mr. Hayner are not here. Mr. Schlickman is traveling, and Mr. Hayner has a family event this evening. So, now, we move on, and we have our new financial, the recommendation, superintendent recommendation of our new chief financial officer.
Yes, thank you. And I want to introduce tonight, Michael Mason, to all of you, though you've had a chance to have a little bit of time, and together before the meeting, as well as some of you were on the interview committees. I'm just gonna give a little brief bio for people who are listening this evening, and then I'm going to turn it over to, to Mr. Mason. Mr. Mason had received his accounting and finance and minor degree from Salem State. And he has been doing this kind of work as, as a business manager, assistant business manager, and doing all the other functions of the business office for something like six years in Chelsea, with the time broken up, where he spent two years at Partners Healthcare as a finance specialist. But he has had a, a strong roots in, in Chelsea. And in fact, one of the things that I learned in all of my reference checking is that he developed a tracking system for their MSBA project, which actually became something of a model. And also, and he probably might want to talk about this a little bit of itself, but he has been doing a lot about developing for Chelsea the meritorious type of budgeting, that we've talked a little bit about here, and certainly have talked a little bit about it in the budget subcommittee. So, I'm, I'm here tonight to recommend to the, the school committee, Mr. Mason, for the position of chief financial officer for the Arlington Public Schools. And so, I'm gonna turn it over to you, and let you have a chance to say a, a few words to everybody. And then, please, it's an opportunity for some questions.
Thank you, Dr. Bodie. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of all of you this evening. And I look forward, with this opportunity, to work with all of the team here, and serve the school committee and this community. As Dr. Bodie has said, I've worked in public education for over six years. And, yes, I did accomplish a lot of things in Chelsea. And some of the things that I've accomplished in Chelsea was leveraging technology, and trying to use technology to build capacity in the business office, to be, to provide greater support to the district leaders and administrators, teachers, as well, try to educate others, even on the municipal side, on how to leverage the technology. I also worked on the Clark Gaff Middle School Project. It was a project that was very similar in terms of phasing construction, and having students in the, on the property while building a school on the same site, in which I did create a, a system to track, and, yes, it's been very, very been, it's been very useful, it's the bible for that project. And the project ran on time, and the funding, the, the cash flows, all worked well. Some of the things that, well, I'm looking forward to is working on, working on this project in Arlington, for the Arlington High School, as well as budget development. And some of the work there in Chelsea, we had a large budget book, which basically was a, a book with just Munis data accounts, with my little narrative, just briefly describing what the use of the accounts were, then, versus what the plan on using those accounts. And so, over the course of time, we've been able to simplify the budget book, make it more accessible, and easier to read, according to the guidance of the Meritorious Budget Award. And I'd like to try to take a stab at that while I'm here, and as a chief financial officer. But the budget is not only, I think budget is part of it, and, you know, it's just a blueprint, a plan, but also being accountable during the reporting. The end-of-year reporting is something that I worked on in Chelsea, where I created a template to, that was also a crosswalk, where a report from Munis, the year-to-date budget report, was dropped in, and a report could be drafted in less than a week, versus having weeks of trying to do a tedious task. Also, creating workflows that worked with both, for the school departments and central office, that was audible and, and transparent, so that district leaders could see where different procurements were pending, and to help them make better decisions in terms of trying to procure and plan out when they would like things to be, like, items to be ordered, and, and to better, to understand where it is in the process, and have the data to understand why things may, why orders may take a little longer than others. But at the same time, make a central location for the documents, and remove the paper from the process. I also was part of a time, implementing a time and attendance, attendance system. This, this Chelsea had started with just index cards, tracking accruals, and, and now, the system, it went from using an Excel template that I created, to now, we're implementing a time and attendance system, which will reduce errors, reduce duplication of effort, build capacity, and not have to hire additional staff, which was recommended from an outside consultant. And as well, we are implementing in Chelsea electronic registration. So, it's all about figuring out what technology is there, and trying to implement it, and it all intersects. But I'm excited to be in this opportunity to not only try to help in where I'm, where I can be, where I'm strong at, but as well as provide the, or advocate more for how to, how to maximize the taxpayers' dollar, and provide a, an even better experience for the students here in Arlington. In Chelsea, I was part of the wellness committee, I was part of the, the, the Chelsea Community Schools Advisory Board. In Chelsea, they, in the early 90s, when they built schools, they removed recreational fields, so the schools became community schools. So, I sit on a board of a group of people, trying to help advise on how to make the program better, and make more opportunities for the community members, adults, and students. And I hope to, to, to link with this community, just as I was able to do in Chelsea, and advocate for a great experience for the students. If you have any questions, yeah, feel free to ask.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Mason?
I'll make a comment.
I'm sure you've heard lots about Arlington, and, and the ways in which we're probably similar, and different from Chelsea. Just to sort of, you've probably heard this from many people, that we are a community, that we're, there are lots of eyes watching, and see if it was very much a public-facing position. There's a time meeting, you know, that you're supposed to be at, and, and the pressure can get intense at times. But that's basically because there's a lot of people who care passionately about education here.
Yes.
I, I find it sort of fun. Not everybody does, but you just have to sort of take it as dry, that when you're talking about educating children, there's a lot of passion involved. And that's just, and, and there's a lot of public-facing passion. And I think, I think it can be great to do that, but sometimes, sometimes that can frustrate people.
Yeah, I understand. One of the things, when I was going through this process, and I, I never, I would never compare Chelsea to Arlington, because the demographics are different. But noticing the, the investments that Arlington is making compared to Chelsea, and that was one of the areas where it interested me, because it seems as though this community is very in tune in trying to educate the students. And I, I mean that, there's probably areas of opportunity to improve, to get the town to participate, or advocate for more funding, but as well as, you know, there's, it's a, there's a statewide problem in general understanding, too. So, trying to figure that balance out. But I look forward to advocating for the students here in this community.
Mr. Carden?
I'll just make a, a comment as well, being on the interview committee. Mr. Mason impressed everybody with both his, his, his deep answers to the questions. He also had a long set of questions to ask us about Arlington. And it was clear that he, you know, had looked at our website, but also had some very interesting things that he was interested in knowing about Arlington. And so, hopefully, as he gets to know us more, he will enjoy the choice he made. We will, I'm the chair of the budget subcommittee, and we'll be working, I look forward to working very closely with you. There will be times when you will get a number wrong, and it's very important, and it may be somebody at a town meeting that finds out that you got a number wrong. It's very important that you admit that it might be wrong, if it, if it's at all a possibility. And, you know, it's very important that we have the faith in the community that our numbers are right, but in the event there is some mistake, that you own up to it and, and move forward. So, we, we were impressed with the way, you know, you, you did answer questions with us, and, and that was very important, that you'd be able to talk to the community, to us at meetings, if you stay for the, to the talk about the end-of-year report. You'll see that some of us will have very detailed questions, and being able to answer them is gonna be very important. Yeah, thank you.
So, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for our new chief financial officer.
Second?
Second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that's unanimous, so, welcome.
Welcome to the team.
Thank you, I look forward to it.
Glad to see you.
You sit over there. Thanks for your service.
Okay. And at this point, we move on to the evaluation of the superintendent, Dr. Bodie. So, this is the annual evaluation. We use a form which is put together by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It looks like this. I've taken everyone's evaluation. Everyone's gonna put their computer away now.
Okay.
We're doing that because under open meeting, or if we do stuff with our computers, then that could be part of the evaluation process, and we don't want our computers to be subpoenaed. So, we're putting our computers away now. And so, everyone has taken this form, gone through the multitude of evidence that Dr. Bodie had, had given us, plus thought through what all we've seen and heard over the past year. The evaluation is for the 2017-18 year. It encompasses her professional practice, student learning goals, district improvement goals, and also things called standards, which are looking at different aspects of running a school system, including instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. And the way I thought we would do this is, I will go through the compilation and read how many, what the ratings were compiled. For the standards, many people had short paragraphs that had interesting content. If you should, if you, so, because of that, I have included them in the compilation, which I think hasn't always been done in the past. If you want to read them now, you can, when I say so. But you don't have to, they're in the, they're in the evaluation anyway. And then, there is a section where it's kind of the summative comments, and I'll give everyone a chance at the end of the evaluation to read those, that paragraph, if they so wish. And we'll have Mr. Hayner and Mr. Schlickman's comments read then, too. They've also filled out an evaluation, and their responses are included here. Dr. Bodie, is there anything you want to say about this, at this point, or just, do we, okay, we'll just keep going?
I'm giving you all the information you would like, at this point.
Okay, great. So, the first part is the assess, assessing the progress towards goals, and the professional, oh, I need to get to where I can read some of this stuff. Okay. Dr. Bodie had set three goals, as is required by the system. She had a professional practice goal, which was to visit each school a minimum of three times between 9:17 and 6:18, including meetings with the principal and classroom walkthroughs. And one person found that she made significant progress towards this. Six people felt she had met this goal. The student learning goal was to oversee the plan of the Gibbs for curriculum operation schedule and culture to be completed in June 2018. One person found there was significant progress. Five people found that that goal was met. One person felt it was exceeded. The district improvement goal is taken from district goal number three, and includes completing schematic and construction plans for Hardy, for the Gibbs, for opening the new addition at the Thompson, and developing a space reconfiguration plan for the Odysseum in preparation for when the sixth grade moved out. And for that goal, one person felt there was significant progress. Five people felt it was met, and one person felt it was exceeded. So, now, we move on to the standards. And I'm going to read the individual items under the standards, and then I'll read the, the overall rating. 1A is curriculum. The superintendent ensures that all instructional staff design effectively rigorous standard-based instruct, units of instruction consisting of well-structured lessons with measurable outcomes. Six people felt she was proficient, one exemplary. And 1B is instruction, ensures that practices in all settings reflect expectations regarding content and quality of effort and work engage all students in her personalized, I'm, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna skim some of these things. That, three people felt there was improvement needed. Three felt she was proficient, one felt she was exemplary. 1C is assessment, ensures that all principals and administrators facilitate practices that propel personnel to use a variety of formal and informal methods and assessments to measure student learning, growth, and understanding. One felt there's need for improvement. Four felt there was a need, four felt she was proficient, and one felt was exemplary, and one person did not answer, give a reading on that. 1D, evaluation, ensures effective and timely supervision and evaluation of all staff in alignment with state regulations and contract provisions. One felt needs improvement. Five felt proficient, and one didn't answer. 1E, data-informed decision-making, uses a multitude of evidence related to student learning to inform student goal, school and district goals, and improve organizational performance, et cetera. Three felt needs improvement. Two felt proficient. One felt exemplary, and one did not answer. For this category, for this standard, five felt that, one person felt, Dr. Bodie, needs improvement. Five felt she was proficient, and one felt she was exemplary. Does anyone want to read their paragraphs under that? No, moving on. The second standard is management and operations. Standard 2A is environment, develops and executes effective plans, procedures, routines, and operational system to address a full range of safety, health, emotional, social needs. Six felt proficient, one exemplary. 2B, human resources management and development, implements a cohesive approach to recruiting, hiring, induction, development, and career, and that promotes, promotes high-quality effective practice. Four felt proficient, three exemplary. 2C, scheduling and management effective, scheduling and management information systems. Three felt needs improvement, three proficient, and one exemplary. 2D, law, ethics, and policies, understands and complies with state and federal laws, et cetera. Six felt proficient, one was exemplary. And 2E, fiscal systems, develops a budget that supports the district's vision, allocates and manages expenditures consistent with district and school-level goals. allocates and manages expenditures consistent with district and school-level goals, et cetera. One felt, one felt needs improvement, six were, six felt proficient. And for the category, for the standard overall, six felt, six rated her proficient and one rated her exemplary. Does anyone want to read paragraphs? Moving on to standard three. 3A, engagement, actively ensures that all families are welcome members of the classroom and school community and can contribute to the effectiveness of the classroom, school, district, and community. One felt needs improvement, six felt proficient. Standard 3B, sharing responsibility, continuously collaborates with families and community stakeholders, support learning and to support student learning and development at home, school, and in the community. One felt needs improvement, six felt proficient. 3C, communication, engages with regular, two-way, culturally proficient communication with families and community stakeholders about student learning and performance. Five felt needs improvement, one felt proficient, one felt exemplary. 3D, family concerns, addresses family and community concerns in an equitable, effective, and efficient manner. Three felt needs improvement, three felt proficient, one exemplary. For the categories overall, for families, community engagement, three felt needs improvement, and four rated proficient. Does anyone want to read their paragraphs? Standard four is the last standard, it's on professional culture. And I'm going to drink some water, so I don't. 4A is commitment to high standards, fosters a shared commitment to high standards of service, teaching, and learning with high expectations of achievement for all. Three felt proficient, four felt exemplary. 4B, cultural proficiency, ensures that policies and practices enable staff members and students to interact effectively in a culturally diverse environment in which students' backgrounds, identities, strengths, and challenges are respected. One felt needs improvement, three felt proficient, three exemplary. 3C, communications, demonstrates strong interpersonal and written and verbal skills. Two felt needs improvement, four felt proficient, one exemplary. 4D, continuous learning, develops and nurtures a culture in which staff members are reflective about their practice and use student data, research, best practices, and theory to continuously adapt and achieve improved results. Models these behaviors in his or her own practice. Five felt proficient, two exemplary. 4E, shared vision, successfully and continuously engages all stakeholders in the creation of a shared educational vision in which every student is prepared to succeed in post-secondary education and become a responsible citizen and global contributor. Three felt needs improvement, four felt proficient. 4F, managing conflict, employs strategies for responding to disagreement and dissent, constructively resolving conflict and building consensus through a district or school community. One felt needs improvement, six rated proficient. Overall, the rating for this standard were six rated proficient and one rated exemplary. Anyone want to read? Nope. So that is the summary, that is all the ratings that we gave. Then the overall rating that the school committee gave the superintendent this year. All seven members rated the superintendent proficient, as has happened in the past. And now we have a chance, would people like to read their summative blurbs or not? No. Yes, no? Okay, that's fine, they're included in the evaluation. If the public wants to hear them, they are available. And that is, I guess the question.
Are you obligated, are you committed to interviewing theirs or no?
No, it was, it was either, whatever we chose to do. So I think we are set. And I'm not sure if anyone wants to say anything else about the evaluation. So this, for me, this is a difficult, it must be very difficult for you because you have to get everything together and then everyone talks at you and sees things differently. But I think it's also difficult for us because we're trying, first, I think this is not the optimal way to work with someone that we manage. It's doing it on camera and things isn't, it's better to talk in person, which we do. But we're also obligated by law to do the evaluation in the method that we've pretty much laid out here. So I don't know if anyone else wants to say anything else?
I just want to say, I think the process, you know, the process has challenges. But I think the good thing about the process is that we get a report from the superintendent on what was achieved in the past year, what, based on the goals that we set. We get to take a look at evidence. I appreciate Kathy and the team putting all this together. And I find that very helpful to get like this summary of the year passed. And so that part is helpful. You know, the system we have is what it is. And there's really, I've never really found a perfect evaluation tool, anyway, especially for a CEO or superintendent of an organization. I think it's, and we're doing it in a public setting, so it's got all sorts of challenges. But the process of getting the information and thinking, and Kathy, thinking about the year, I think is, I think is a healthy thing for us.
Dr. Seuss?
Yeah, I just want to comment that I know in the past, I personally have been frustrated by the materials that were given. And I think this year, you guys did a great job. And I thought the narrative was helpful. And I thought the materials were relevant. And so that was really, made things a lot more helpful.
And I think it is a good opportunity for us to think about what would we like to see different in the coming year, I mean, both for us and for you. And that is a useful thing to do once a year at least, too. Thank you. And I will give you the.
Yeah, I'll take, I haven't, we've talked about it briefly today, but I haven't seen.
Right, right, right. So you'll get all the comments. And I know people would be happy to talk to you.
I have a bunch of mistakes on mine.
That will be added to novice?
Yes, that will be added to novice. We just couldn't release it before. Yeah.
Well, you haven't seen the evaluations yet, you said?
No.
It's not me.
I've seen, I've seen yours.
I just sent it right to the superintendent.
That's appropriate. Okay, anything else?
Well, just a comment. I'll look forward to seeing what your comments are. But I think that you're right. I mean, talking in person is something that I think is good. And I don't think any of you are shy about doing that, either. So, but it's also helpful for us to know what you were looking for. I think the narrative was a good way of doing it this year. Because from our point of view, it's very crystal clear. But that's because we live it. And we do it, we're doing it. So hearing, seeing it from your point of view, that, well, I don't see how that connects, or what does that, how does that relate, I think was helpful. So we can just go forward with the narrative. If you have any other suggestions, as we're in this year, is helpful because, you know, as Ms. Fitzgerald knows, this is quite an effort to pull everything together. And we probably need to, you know, having a little bit more guidance from what you want is helpful to us as we go through the year.
Okay. Great.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So moving on, we have the end-of-year financial review. Mr. Denizio?
Thank you.
Yeah, we can get our computers out now.
So I think.
Trying to protect your computer.
Attached, what I tried to give you was a, just a quick summary memo to go along with the final summary report. The end-of-year report is, you know, 50 pages or 40 something pages long with different reports and exhibits in it. And at the bottom, the final report just summarizes all the spending, broken down into spending categories. So what I tried to share with you was just that report and then just give a, you know, brief summary of each spending category and what are the things in it and what was the change from last year to, you know, fairly simple. You can see the total spending from last, year-over-year was, you know, about 90, just over 96 million. That includes, you know, that number probably scares people right off the bat. But as you can see in the memo, this includes spending from all funding sources. So it's our operating budget that we get from a town appropriation. It's grants from federal and state. It's revolving accounts, including things like after-school program, community ed, daycare, preschool, anything that has a user fee. It's also from any donations we got from, from anybody that was processed through our books. And it also includes indirect costs that were spent by the town for, in support of schools. Things like debt service, health insurance, workers' comp, things like that for school employees, retirement for school employees. So as you can see, was, the total spending was 96, just over 96 and a half billion dollars. There was about, it was just over 90 million last year. So it's about a 6.7% increase in total. You can see that the report is broken down by function, functional code. And the functional codes are what the SE uses to make sure everybody is, report, so that they can make it so people, when they're doing benchmarking, comparing to other districts, so that we're all reporting classes of staff in the same category. So if you want to go and compare yourself from administration, say, how do you compare with what is classified as administration in the end-of-year report? You can do that because everybody's putting the dollars in the same function code, in theory. So just a little bit about spending categories. There's the school budget, which is probably pretty easy and looks familiar to everybody because it's the closest thing to the number that we approve in our budget process. And the spending was right in line. I think we turned back about $8,000 or $9,000 last year. So that number looks really, really close to what we, what we spent. We also, when you report, you report what you spent at June 30th, plus any encumbrances that you've encountered and are going to pay the bill in the next year. But, so they get reported as last year. The town budget might not, we never approve that on our budget. We never go over what, what that's made up of. There's a, there's an agreed-upon, there's a signed agreement from, you know, some time ago that breaks down what are those costs that are paid by the town that are in support of the schools. And it, and it includes things like a portion of the comptroller's office, a portion of the treasurer's office, town manager, legal, telephone, part of the audit, part of munis. And then all of health insurance for school employees, all of health insurance for retired school employees, workers' comp, and unemployment for our employees. Those are things that are in the town budget, but they're tracked. So it's easy to tell how much belongs to school employees and how much not. Things like insurance, an SRO, some technology that isn't, that isn't already paid from our budget. And then the big one, debt service and regional school. So those are all in the town. You'll see that the town budget, the town spending year-over-year grew by $2 million. That was mostly due to debt service grew by about $730,000, mostly to Gibbs coming on and paying the debt service for Gibbs. So the way we report, what, what they do is you report the debt service. That becomes how you spent the money. It's so how they can capture when you build a new school. They don't want you to report $22,000 worth of expenses in one year and none in the next year. But they want you to report on how you, you know, on your total spending for the schools. So you pay it as you pay down the debt. It gets reported that way. You also, any reimbursements you get from MSBA comes in as revenue and also gets booked as an expense in the end-of-year report. So there's an in and an out, so you also capture that piece. So if you do build a $30 million school and get $10 million in reimbursement, you really do book the whole. So the big hitters in the town budget was debt service. Minuteman went up by, you know, over $600,000 this year. That's paid for by the town budget. But, you know, it's obviously an education expense, so it gets as an indirect cost back to us. And then the rest was within, you know, employee benefits, health insurance, workers' comp, unemployment, those sort of things. In the grant funds, the number, the number doesn't look exactly like what we budgeted because this year is the first year where they changed it. It used to be that you reported on the grant year, which made the end-of-year report even more confusing because you were reporting July and August in the previous year. And, and sometimes up until, you could spend that money up until October 31st. So sometimes you were, you were reporting all the way through to October 31st for a report that's due on September 30th. So after time, they finally changed that because now they're, they really treat grants like two-year grants. It used to be that you'd have to file an amendment to the grant and ask for an extension. But now the way grants are, since they're really two-year grants, they just want you to report the actual fiscal year. Makes it much easier on us. But since it's the first year, it doesn't look, it doesn't match up perfectly. And it probably won't next year, it probably won't going forward match up exactly to our budget book because some of the money gets spent over the summer in one year and then again the next year. So I don't think it will match up perfectly. But that's, like I said, because grant year doesn't match up to fiscal year. And the revolving special revenue accounts, this is the one that can be, you know, a big number, especially for us, where we have such thriving after-school program. We have a thriving community ed program. You know, that, that grew by, you know, having 8, $8.3 million in that isn't, isn't common, or at least anywhere I've worked. But it also includes circuit breaker, which is, you know, 25% of that. So that grew by 800,000. And it was, it was basically all in column seven, which is tuition and user fees, which is the after-school program. And column 10, which is called other receipts, that's where community ed is. They both grew by a couple hundred thousand dollars. So they made up the bulk of the change in that area. I think it's important for people to know that the end-of-year report is, is supposed to make it so you can compare yourself to other people and be comparing apples to apples. However, it can get tricky if someone's community ed program, say, isn't part of their school department and instead part of the rec department. Or, you know, that can, that can, that can make it tricky. So I just wanted to point that out. I'd be happy to take any questions. I think, since we didn't do this last year, I've actually, actually only ever reported on audits of end-of-year report. So I didn't have anything, any, I was used to reporting. So I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Mr. Carden?
So sticking on community ed. So when they do calculate the per pupil spending, which is based off of these numbers, do they back out community ed?
It's not, it's not included.
Okay.
Neither would daycare, after-school, debt service.
Services is also backed out of that?
Minuteman.
No, Minuteman is included in our.
In our district, per pupil? Oh, really?
So debt services and, you know, it's pretty much anything that counts towards net school spending is included in, it's not exactly that, but that's a quick and dirty way to do it. If it counts towards net school spending, it counts as per pupil. If it doesn't, it doesn't.
No, Minuteman might not, I don't know.
Oh, is Minuteman included in that?
Regional doesn't include it.
It is, okay, yeah, that's what I.
So I can share the whole report with you because it's easy when you look at the report. Anything in gray, it doesn't count.
Oh, that'd be helpful. And then, okay, that did most of my questions, then one question. The other, only other question was, the legal services charged by the town seems quite high. I know that's a historic, you know, MOA, but $135,000, that's, is that just for Doug Hyman and his staff? Or?
It's a portion of Doug and it's 135. It's Doug and his staff mostly, but it's, I'll have to see if it, this better, I'm going to have to get back to you.
Okay, no problem.
But it is Doug and his staff. And I think it also probably includes workers' comp because it's done through them. And that doesn't have a specific spot in benefits.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions? Dr. Seuss?
Yeah, two questions. Other student body activities, 3520. I'm just wondering, so there's a huge amount in column seven? School, and I'm just not sure what that does, what that is.
Could you just tell me what it was again?
Other student body activities, 3520.
Yeah, it's.
So if you go across, so that we have 150,000 in the school committee, yeah.
After-school program is, that's the line.
So that's after-school? So that's after-school?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's other stuff too, but it's mostly after-school, one point, one point four million of that is the after-school program.
And then the second question I had is custodial services are all with us, but I know that we often bill custodial services to various organizations, or, I mean, I would have thought that sort of other, that some of that money would be in other places.
So it will come in, when we bill somebody, it will come in as a revenue in, in, so this is just the expense side.
Yeah, okay.
It will come in on, well, Schedule One revenue.
Right, okay, so no one else is spending, right, okay, all right.
And when we spend that money.
Yeah, you're right, I was, yes, yes, I get that.
Anyone else, Ms. Morgan?
Why do we only have long-term subs and not short-term subs?
So, it's a change this year. So some of the changes that were, which were made this year was, you used to, you used to report professional days, for instance, we used to have to take three days, three per diem days out of everybody's salary and report that as professional development, because they're used to, at, at one point many years ago, there was a requirement of a certain threshold you had to spend for professional development for every district. That's been gone for a while, so they've taken that reporting requirement off. So we used to say, if I were a teacher and I made fifty thousand dollars, a hundred and eighty out of a hundred and eighty-three would go to my teacher staff. So that was a change they made last year. They made a change in specialists last year because of, I think probably because of, everyone reported them differently, they changed those, so you didn't, you didn't break those out, and they did the same with substitutes. So substitutes now are reported in one line, whether you're per diem sub, you know, called in every day, or whether you're in for somebody for an extended period of time, unless you're in for the whole year, then you get booked as a teacher. So this, there's requirements for each of them. I'm not sure I answered your question, but it was because they changed from having to break them out differently to now they're, they're all the same, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so I had one question, just going back to what you were saying about the town budget stuff. When you say it's set, that's, it's our internal, inside Arlington agreement that determines, so, so another town could have a totally different agreement, and like the legal fees that we just talked about, that might be charged totally to the town side, it wouldn't show up, so.
So there's many different ways you can do it. There's an indirect cost rate, you could use just a simple rate that says it's this much times however many students we have, and that's how much we book for indirect, and then you also have to add in all the other stuff like health insurance, all the stuff that's easy, easily attributed. Or you can have an agreement with what the percentage is, or dollar amounts, or whatever, however you want to do it, but yes, everybody's is different.
Okay, that, that's kind of what I was wondering.
And we're so far over net school spending that it's not, it's not something we look too deeply on, but there are districts that are right at net school spending, and that's something that they have to work on every year to say, you know, we're charging back 22%, but we really feel like we're only getting 18% of that.
Oh, I see. Okay, that's interesting. Okay, no more questions? Okay, thank you very much for doing this, this is, it's interesting and helpful, yeah.
Yeah.
So moving on, we have the superintendent's report.
Well, I want to begin by first acknowledge, and this, this is likely going to be John Denizio's last school committee meeting. It's possible, maybe not, but the plan going forward will be that he will be here on Fridays through December and January, but I want to take this opportunity to thank him. He's done just a terrific job, we're all very sad to see him go, but at the same time, we really wish him well in terms of what he's, what he's using this opportunity for in terms of sort of a, a life plan. But he's done a lot to, to get our, our systems in better shape than they were, and I expect that Mr. Mason, with John's mentorship, will, will take this further for us. But it has really been terrific, and he knows how much we're all going to miss him.
Thank you very much.
So, I move from John Denizio to snow. I have been following the reports, and fortunately, are you going to look out and see what we have?
I'm going to get the breeze smelling.
Oh, yeah?
But it's not sticking at all, no problem.
No problems, yes. That's what, that's what my sense was, at about midnight, it's going to change to rain anyway.
Yep.
But we are entering our favorite season of the year.
Do your homework.
And certainly mine, as I have to think about these things. Here's, my, my son-in-law said to me the other day, you need to get something out of this garage because there's snow coming, I just like this. But at any rate, I don't think there's going to be any issues tomorrow, we will have rain for sure, and our custodians are coming in early to make sure the walkways are cleared of slush. I think that's going to be our biggest issue, is whether we'll have some slush.
Ice.
Ice, possibly ice, but it's going to be possibly in the forties in the morning. So it, it may get icy later in the day, but I'm not sure it will be icy in the morning. But we're not, fortunately, at the time where we're going to have to talk about, you know, if you don't think it's safe for your child to get to school, we can have, we can talk about excused absences, we'll have that speech later in December, hopefully that won't happen. So I did want to mention that the reason why Dr. McNeil is not here is that he is in Houston presenting the, the findings in his dissertation to a conference, and his, his dissertation was on how educators of color experience racial disproportionality in the educator pipeline and schools. And it might be very interesting for the committee to hear some of these points at, at another time.
Yeah, here, please.
I want to just do the same MO as last year, quick updates on buildings, and Hardy is, we're pretty sure is on time, we're getting, we're getting very close, and we're going to be, having to start planning the move that will occur over the holiday break. The high school, we are, we are in the process, we still have, we have a lot that is going on, and we've had more community participation over the fall, as people become more aware of where we are in the process, and we are seeing greater numbers of people coming to the, the building committee. This particular meeting that's scheduled next Tuesday is going to, has a very packed agenda, but the thing that people need to know is that there's a chance for public participation, and then Mr. Thielman also, as chair of the committee, allows participation at the end as well, to sort of comment on what, what has gone on in the meeting. And this particular meeting, we will be talking now about the exterior elevations, so I think that'll be of, of great interest to people. We, the following Tuesday, the twenty, the 27th, right after the Thanksgiving break, is going to be our next community forum, and we decided yesterday at our communications subcommittee meeting to have a snow date of November 28th. And so, but right now, we're still planning the 27th, and hopefully that would be okay with you, Mr. Thielman?
Twenty-eight's fine, yeah.
Okay. All right, we've, we've cleared it with town hall, just in case.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's a lot, we have quite a timeline going forward, a very, it's really going to be, the next couple of months are going to be very intense amount of work on the part of the committee, and we would love to have people's feedback as we, as we go forward. It could be that maybe at our next meeting, since some people might not make the form, and we'll have more information, at that time, we could do a little bit of some showing of where we are with some of the elevations.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, and the last thing I would bring up is that, oh, let me just mention the date, so it's next Tuesday, and then the other next meetings for the, the next one after that is December 4th. We are planning another forum in January, we have not set the, I guess we did, we set Monday, the 14th of Janu, January, I think is our first.
We were discussing that, but it was, it was sent out, yeah.
But that's tentative, yeah, we're working on it right now, but we are going to have a, another forum in January. So only the last thing I wanted to say is just to remind people that AEF, which is an enormous supporter of the public schools, is having their annual reception this coming Monday from 6:00 to 8:00 at Trist, and the two featured presenters are Brian Maringer and Chris, and Kristen DeFrancisco, talking about all the changes that are happening in our middle schools. So I, and, you know, I certainly invite people on behalf of AEF to attend that, but certainly, as you're thinking about donations to a worthy cause this, this next month, please consider, and consider contributing, and that's it.
Sports teams?
Pardon?
Sports teams.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, you know, I didn't get the report entirely, I'll have to give it back to you, I don't, in terms of where we are in the, you might know, actually.
I just, boys soccer.
Boys soccer is doing really well, yeah.
They won the.
Division two.
Division two.
And boys cross country too, right?
Yes.
Boys cross country has been doing well the last couple of years, but they had already clinched it the last time I reported out, they'd already clinched the title.
Yes, soccer was recent.
Right, so I know that the finals are going on, on soccer this weekend.
Yeah.
By the way, from, the, the team is competing in the state finals on Saturday for girls' soccer. I had, over this last weekend, some compliments about our girls' soccer team as to how good they were, so they really had a terrific season too. But I'll, I'll be able to next meeting to tell you, hopefully, where we are next.
Thank you very much. And moving on, we have the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which it meant the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of warrant, warrant dated 10/25/2015, 2018, warrant number 19075, amount $776,132.94. Approval of minutes, regular school committee minutes of 10/25/18, and approval of Tripp Odison Middle School, New York City, May 18, 2019.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So that passes unanimously? There are no policies? We now move on to this subcommittee and liaison reports. Budget.
Thank you, so budget met as a subcommittee, and then the budget and CIA joint committee met also, both since our last meeting, I believe. For budget, we went over a draft budget calendar, updating the calendar that I think you originally prepared a few years ago, and so that's in Novus, I don't think it's something that really needs a vote, but it just shows, you know, that we're going to be hearing from the principals and department heads over the next two meetings in December, well, not next two, but the, the two meetings in December, we still have a November meeting first, and then we'll have a chance to set our priorities for, this is for the 2020 budget, and we'll also have a look at the five-year plan along the way, and when we go out to the community for input, the idea is to, to talk about both the five-year plan and the 2020 budget, which is in effect the first year of the five-year plan. So our usual, our usual schedule with the change of adding items from the five-year plan into that. Any questions?
No.
Great.
Okay. So we don't think we need to approve this? No? Okay. Okay, sounds good.
We, we do have another meeting scheduled end of November, I think, on a Friday.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
To continue.
We have a, the joint meeting is?
No, the, and the joint meeting is also scheduled for.
December.
In December.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, yeah. Friday morning, December 14th.
Did we, had we actually picked a time for a budget?
Probably 8:30, but no, we hadn't.
On which day, though? Did we pick the 30th at the end?
I thought we did, maybe not.
And what's the time for the budget?
Yeah.
The joint meeting's at, oh.
December 14th at eight.
The joint meeting.
Eight o'clock.
Yeah.
Eight o'clock on December 14th, right here.
Okay.
Or wherever, Kathy's office, depending on what the.
Yeah, we had 10 and 00 set the 30th as a, at 8:30 as a budget subcommittee meeting.
November 30th?
November 30th, yeah.
I'm sorry, what time?
8:30.
And then the joint meeting, 8:00 AM, December 14th, right here.
So moving on, community relations?
Yes, we had a meeting this week, I don't have the exact date, on the 13th, and covered a bunch of stuff. So we started with a discussion about whether it made sense to do redistricting of buffer zones, or expansion of buffer zones this year, and it was a superintendent's consensus, and, and the committee agreed that, that we just didn't have enough data, it wasn't clear that an expansion would help at this point, it might be something that we take up in the future, but, but there's no immediate plans to sort of engage in this discussion. And, and saying that, if we do decide to do this in the future, we will do so thoughtfully and open, and there'll be lots of time for public participation, and we, A, didn't have the time this year, and then B, it just wasn't clear it was going to help, so. We also discussed the survey that parents and teachers and staff got on the calendar and late start time. So we went to the community, and we went to, to teachers and, and staff, and asked three questions. Two were about calendars, one was whether there was an interest in starting school before Labor Day, and there, there, people could rank their, their choices. Two is whether there was an interest in eliminating three of the four religious holidays, the fourth religious holiday that wasn't asked about is Christmas Eve, but that, some school districts are talking about eliminating that as well. And then we also asked about late start, starting high school and middle school at 8:30. So over 50%, I have a document that I'm, I just got some new charts on it, so I will be able to present it to the school committee to just show them the results, but I can tell you briefly, and, and, and Dr. Reddy can chime in if I've missed something, over half of the parents filled out the survey, and about a third of the teachers and staff. On the question whether to start school before Labor Day, 68% of the parents and 59% of the staff said their first choice would be to keep the current start date after Labor Day. So that was a clear consensus there. In terms of the start time, 73% of parents were in favor of moving the high school start time to 8:30, 15% preferred the current start time, and 12% had no preference. Middle school, 63% in favor, 19% opposed, and 18% having no preference. So higher, I don't have clear numbers for the staff, because a higher percentage of the teachers and staff had no preference, and I assume that's because they work in the elementary schools, and they don't, doesn't, it's not relevant. Dr. Bodie said that, I haven't seen the, the breakdown on these numbers of staff who work at the middle and high school, but that it was in the similar range of parents, so 70, 80% of people who actually would be affected, I guess either in favor of it or have no preference, is that sort of, I mean?
80% of being in favor of it.
Okay, all right. So, so to me, those seem like really clear numbers, I think the community is in favor of starting later, I think that the staff is in favor of it. I have to say personally, I've attended a bunch of workshops on the benefits of late start, and even a half an hour can, you can have tremendous improvements in social emotional health of students, in reducing accidents to those students who drive, I know it's only a tiny percentage, in terms of increased test scores, there's real benefits to being able to get that extra half an hour sleep, I mean, an hour would be great, but, but every little bit counts, and, and there's really, really clear data, and I encourage people to go to, there's a website called startschoollater.com, and you can get a bunch of these fun sort of data, stuff about how important it is, and how valuable it is for students at that age group. This is a group where the circadian rhythm has sort of shifted, so that they just cannot wake up, mentally wake up early, they just cannot go to bed early enough to get the full eight hours of sleep, and that, it's just, it's just a biological phenomenon, every kid's different, of course, but, but there is some. Every kid's different, of course, but, but there is something that happens in that teenage years that shifts that circadian rhythm. So, do you want to say something about what are the current discussions or plans or?
Well, what we do annually is, is set the, the major dates and, for the, the calendar in, in January. And, you know, we've already had some discussions with the, the AEA about, about this, that my recommendation is going to be to the school committee that we start both the middle and the high school at 8:30 next year. I can tell you from districts that did it this year, and, and it wasn't unanimous in their own districts, but it, it worked out seamlessly. The, the reports are very positive. Whether we changed it or not, we are part of the Middle Sex League for Athletics, and all athletic sports are conforming in schedules to the later start times. And, and actually, there's some great benefits for us in terms of we're able to handle more of the transportation to athletic events because of that change. But the most important thing is what, exactly what you're talking about. The, the evidence is really strong, very strong, about the, the positive effects for students in starting later. There was actually one school in England that actually went and started at 10:00, and they said it was the most incredible change in, in, in student interest and engagement and achievement. We are not proposing 10:00 in the morning, but we are proposing 8:30 in the morning. The elementary schedule would stay the same. And we are, we are very fortunate in Arlington that we're not constrained by bus schedules as much. We, we'd be able to adjust to this very, very well. So that would be my recommendation when we go to set the calendar in January.
Can I ask about the question about religious holidays, or were you going to?
Yeah, that's the next one.
Okay.
Yeah, so, okay, so the question of whether to hold school during the three, three religious holidays, Yom Kippur, Rosh Hashanah, and, and Good Friday, the majority of parents, 58% were in favor of changing the calendar, but the majority of teachers and staff, 61% were not. So we really did not have, in, in those questions, any clear consensus about moving forward. So I do want to say, Ms. Fitzgerald hopefully sent over a spreadsheet to me about our first and last days. There are some years for when Labor Day is particularly late, that our last day where we'd have five snow days is very, very late. So in the 2020, 2021, Tuesday, June 29th. The next year is on the 28th. You know, we have another on the 29th in, in 2027. So I think, I think it might make sense at some point to have maybe a working group, maybe teachers, maybe school committee members, to talk about a variety of options. I, I know my experience when school ends at late is, first of all, camp starts a year, you know, so if you have kids who are going to sleepaway camp, it starts the week earlier. So you either have to just skip school, or, or there's something, or, you know, try to get your money back, or, you know, pay, you know, do, do something. It's also can be difficult to schedule things with family members who don't live in Massachusetts, because everyone has, almost everyone gets out earlier. So, so I think it makes sense to continue the conversation. There's, the sense from this survey is that there's no appetite for moving forward right now with any changes. But I think, I think we really do want to sort of keep talking between community members, potentially school committee members, and, and teachers and staff, just brainstorming, what, what ideas could we think of to maybe solve this problem for those years?
I heard, I just want to say, I did hear from a few community members, I don't think any of them were current parents, but honestly, I'm forgetting right at the moment, that were, who were concerned about the inclusion of the religious holiday question and the phrasing, you know, I went into, I copied the question, I told them what it was, but their concerns were that first, they had felt really validated that Arlington had chosen to have Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur off, and they felt like to put that up for essentially what they saw as majority vote. They had a, it left them with a really bad taste. I, given that it was clumped together with Good Friday, I'm not sure. It, it's a little, you know, it's not pitting it.
Yeah, I know. Some people in the community felt that way, I know.
So I think if we do any, I'm, I'm bringing this up because if we do any further investigation, I think we want to be really careful about how it's done. And, you know, last time with the question, what we had asked was kind of, will your child go to school, or will you, if you're a teacher, will you be in school? And then looked at the mismatch between students and teachers.
We, when, many years ago?
Yeah.
Before my time, then?
Yeah, yeah. When, when we were deciding.
Oh, yeah.
And it was felt that there was enough mismatch that we were kind of effectively losing an educational day.
Right, right.
Or that's what I remember this.
So I, I had many, many conversations with people as well about this. I have, some people won't just talk to me anymore properly, because, because I defended the decision to ask the question. What I reassure people in the community is that this was not us secretly making a decision and then trying to justify it. That was sort of the perception. That it was really just a curious how the community feels, and if there was ever going to be any change, it wouldn't happen without lots of dialogue and discussion, lots of, you know, public input. You know, I, I'm suggesting that it might make sense to start a small working group to talk about issues if religious holidays came up in that discussion. There's no way that any decision would be made without tons and tons of insight. I do also have to say that I have gotten several people who are Muslim or Hindu, Hindu, who are upset that their holidays aren't being considered. And I, I don't actually think that what we're doing when we take a day off of school is validating a particular group of people. I think, because then, if we say that, then there's a whole bunch of people we're not validating, right? So that is not the reason why we ta, you know, take a holiday. We, we, we have a holiday off school be, I mean, we take that day off because we think it's going to be hard to function as a school district.
And, and that's what I tried to explain, that that's part of why people, you know, first, that other school districts do not have these days off at all, and, and handle them in different ways.
Yeah.
Not, not that people are expected just to suck it up, but, but also that there are other religions which have important days during these, you know.
Right. So actually, I want to ask one more thing. So Ms. Morgan sent, Heffley sent a policy from Lexington that suggested having a policy about a certain number of holidays, that no test could be given on those holidays that was more comprehensive. We might want to look into doing something like that as a committee, whether or not we add, eliminate, you know, any, any of the, the religious holidays on the calendar. It just might be a good practice to sort of have that as a public document. And I, I'm going to bring that up in second half.
Mr. Kirk?
Thanks. Yeah, so just on the holidays, the, the, maybe the messaging and the cover email could have been more clear, but the, again, it was, as Dr. Sue said, it was just to get a, a temperature taking of the community. We wanted to consider all religious holidays together. If we eliminated the three, you know, is there any, was there any consensus on that whatsoever? There wasn't. So clearly, it's not something we would move forward with. Had there been some consensus, then it would, something that, again, we would have a committee, maybe, maybe we do Blizzard bags instead, maybe that would solve the problem. But the issue is, June 29th is the last day of school, and that's only, if we have only five school day, uh, snow days. What if we have a bad year and we end up with six or seven, and then, you know, you're going to school on a Saturday? So when Labor Day is late, we have this issue. It happens every six or seven years. And so we need to come up with a solution. And so that was just to start the conversation. That was not an avenue that the community wanted to pursue. So as this, as we go forward, that will be taken into consideration, and maybe we'll look at Blizzard bags, or starting before Labor Day, or not having a professional day that one year, or, or some other solution that can get us off of the 29th as being our last day of school.
I just had one more thing, sorry. So in Novus is something I worked hard on, so I want to just point out, potentially a comprehensive list of all of the people, the people who we've appointed to the various committees across town, and when they're due late dates. So.
Awesome.
We've never had that before. Nobody in town has it. I think this is the right list, but it's good, you know. Anyone knows, anyone who's appointed a committee that I haven't included, let me know, let us know. I think this is a comprehensive list.
Great, thank you very much. Okay. Moving on, facilities. Anyone on facilities? No? Okay. Policies? Anyone want to speak up for policies? Nothing here?
Mike Gilbert's coming the next meeting.
What?
Sorry? Mike Gilbert?
Oh, so we need to see these policies.
So, we need to get the policies distributed. I don't know if, I, I think at one point Paul had asked you to put them into Novus, but then, they, they weren't there. So I think it'd be easier if, if we send them out. So I will, if, if we can talk tomorrow about putting that together, that'd be good.
Yeah.
You have, you have everything. It's the minutes.
I have everything.
Yeah.
I don't have. Okay.
All right, we'll go over it.
Has anybody approached Mike Gilbert about coming on the 29th? I think that's the last possible date he can come.
I assumed that Paul had, but no.
Maybe we, maybe we should make sure, you know, reach out to him. He is retiring on December 1st.
Right.
And, and actually leaving the area. So he had talked, he had agreed that he'd be happy to come, but it would be good for all of you to see the work that was done.
Yes, with the lots of.
With lots of time, because we're talking about a budget, a, a policy book that's like this.
We need time.
It's, it's quite significant. So we can, so I think if we could, I think what he was planning on doing, but I'm not positive, is that you would see flagged what the, the policy that was chosen, because it would go between MASC's policy or, or Arlington. In some cases, we just got rid of some policies that were, you know, outdated. But I think he was going to keep in the document both with the, with the one, no? He's just going to give the new one?
Correct.
Okay.
If you want to see what was changed, it's in the minutes. So for each, each section, like Section A, you go to the minutes of that meeting, we discussed it, it says, keep, for A, 11B, it says, keep Arlington. A, 22B, take, keep, and adopt MASC. So that's where you see what we changed, and then you take that document as you're looking through the new policy.
Perfect. Well, I, I took copious notes, too, so I have every policy, what we decided to do, handwritten, too. So we, we have duplicates of all that.
So is this the entire thing, or is this half?
Entire thing.
Everything.
Yeah, we need time.
So is the idea that we would, that we would do that on the 29th, and then how would it be sort of messaged? Like, then do those policies come, are they active immediately?
We'd have two readings, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would probably, I mean, I think the idea is to present it with, with Mike here, in case there are questions.
Okay.
That could be considered the first reading, and then we could adopt them in a second reading. If there are a lot of questions and changes, then it would be considered the first reading. We'd, we'd go back and have a, a subcommittee meeting.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll put that on the agenda.
If we can confirm with Mike.
Yeah, well, that, that's.
Do you want me to, or, since Paul's away, do you want me to reach out to him, or? Okay.
Could you do that? That'd be great. Thank you. Okay.
Is the policy, Lynn, that we had in about, after school, is that in there?
No, so we have not, as far as I know, we have not taken action on that policy. There were a couple that have been referred to us that we did not, we focused only on, on getting through the stuff with Mike. So bug Paul about that when he gets back.
Legal services review? Nothing? No. Building committee? Anything you want to add?
I don't think I have anything to add.
You're on that committee.
I know. But he's here. Gibbs, nothing? Okay, does anyone have any liaison reports, announcements, or future agenda items?
Uh, Macbeth. The Arlington High School is performing Macbeth, uh, Friday, Saturday at 7:30, and Saturday at 2:00. And it should be great, so.
Here the weed is excellent.
What?
I said, I hear the weed is excellent.
Yes, and I'm a proud mama. My son is in it, so I'm very excited to see him.
Anyone else? No? Okay. At this point, we go into executive session. We're not returning after, for anything, right? Okay, so we will, we will not return after executive session. Executive session is to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union and/or non-union personnel, or contract negotiations with union and/or non-union, in which, if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect. We'll be discussing Dr. Jengar's calendar, Dr. Jengar's contract, to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, in which, if held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect. Collective bargaining may also be conducted, and also the deployment of security personnel or devices. Can I have a motion?
Motion. So move.
Second.
Can I have a second? Okay, this is a roll call. Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Yes.
Pardon, and I say yes. And we are now in executive session. Thank you all.